Okay, this is seven o'clock. I will bring this Planning Commission to open the Planning Commission up on January the 21st, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Oneitz?
Here.
Commissioner McKenna?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Hancock?
Here.
And Commissioner Moore?
Here.
So could we have the approval of the regular meet—the minutes of the regular meeting October 21st? Has anybody got any comments on that?
I'll second.
Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Oneitz?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenna?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
That was four to zero. So are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes tonight, Mr. Chairman.
So this is the oral and written communications portion. Public is asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record for any items that are not on the current agenda. Please limit your comments to items already agendized for discussion. So is there anybody who would like to do that? Seeing nobody, I will close the public process. So matters at hand. The review of the proposed fiscal year's 2020 to 25 capital improvements program for conformity with the general plan. Could staff report come up on that?
Chair, members of the council, commission, sorry. Good evening. My name is Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The item for you tonight is the city capital improvements program covering all the different departments of the city. You've got the water, sewer utilities, streets, drainage, parks, buildings. Each one of these is contained or, well, let me back up and just say, so the requested action is to—we're asking the commission to find comformance of the CIP with the city's general plan. So you've got the general plan and then master plans that are drilled down to each of these department areas. And these master plans typically come before the council for—the Planning Commission for conformance with the general plan themselves and for adoption by the city council. And they drill down in a great detail into each of these department areas and come up with a prioritized capital project list for implementing the general plan, the 30, 40 years of this general plan. And so what happens with the CIP, how the CIP fits in here, is we need just a very brief look out into the future, just five years, not 30 years, 40 years, just five years, pulling the most important projects from these various master plans and comparing that to what the available budget is. Because the city has, I think, a 10-year financial model that it keeps projecting out revenues and what development's going to happen and what's happening in the water utilities, sewer utilities. And so it's not perfect, but it's sort of an educated guess as to what revenues are going to come in during this period. And we marry up those high priority projects with that available revenue. So that's kind of in a nutshell what the CIP's role is. So it's—what it's not is it's not containing every single project that's listed in the CIPs. That would be much too much money that we can afford to do it all front-loading it in five years instead of spreading it out over 30 or 40 years. Also, I think it's good to keep in mind that the projects listed in the CIP are the public improvement projects. That's the ones that the city has control over. So we keep these funding sources and we see certain sewer pipes are reaching their capacities, so we, you know, budget for it and go ahead and build it. Now, what's not included in the CIP is the other half, all the improvements that the private developers are installing. And so that is a significant number because when an improvement comes along, they have—they'll sometimes, well, they'll connect pathways, build bike pedestrian, bicycle lanes, as well as water and sewer master plan, trunk lines sometimes if it runs through that developer's property, et cetera. So those you will not see in the CIP because the timeline of those developments is really out of our control. Okay, so running through bullets three, four, and five there, you've—we'll go ahead and look at the CIP projects briefly, glance at each of the department areas, and then go over next steps and then the recommendation. Okay, so the requested action here is the government code and the planning and zoning law requires submission of the CIP to the Planning Commission for a finding of conformity with the general plan. So how this is—this is done is—the general plan has these goals and objectives, and we just—we—we—each of the project sheets in the master plan list what the goal or objective is that is being met by that project. So if it's a roadway project, it's tying to the circulation element of the general plan to improve, maintain roadways in the city, just to paraphrase that. So I've gone over—I kind of summarized what the purpose is, but it is a financial document, and it's consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. I think also it's good to note when I mentioned these developments, and we have the corridor 116, Highway 116, where Caltrans is to widen on 116. So anytime Caltrans or the developers approach the city with one of their planned projects, we evaluate those plans against implementing the general plan, our general plan. So for example, with the assisted living project on Alder in Highway 116, we have an irrevocable offer of dedication for the cul-de-sac. It's not going to be a cul-de-sac right away, but at such time as development happens where roadways come in behind there, we can close off that street and make it into a cul-de-sac. We don't have—we've already gotten that dedication in the recorder's office. It's already there in black and white. That is to be dedicated to the city when that happens. And then the right-of-way is dedicated for the future widening of 116 and so forth. So that's just one example of how we foresee what our ultimate build-out of the general plan is and incorporate it into those developments, put it as conditions on the land. Okay, this is just a list of the master plans. You know, it's—and I respect this as a sort of a daunting amount of information to digest all in one sitting, but each of these master plans take two or three years to prepare. And many of them have models and studies and work groups with the public and everything else. So each one of these is a pretty significant body of work. Another one to add to the list, I just realized isn't on there, is the recent trash implementation plan that, believe it or not, we presented that to this body back in November of 2018, you know? Yes, for trash, right? So yeah, it's in the—it's in the CIP, but it's not in this list. It's not in this list here. I think—it hasn't officially been accepted by the regional board just yet. It's been submitted probably six months ago or so, but okay. So this is where we just go through one each of the departments with first the relevant goal, the general plan, and then the list. So we've got the water utility, and there is the goal in the community services and facilities. What's an objective? The CSF 2A, provide an adequate supply of clean, safe, fresh, environmentally sound water to existing and planned users within the city service area. And I apologize, in the packet, everything after fresh got blanked out when we hit the print button. So there's the rest of the text up there. Apologize for that. Okay, and so the project list in the packet, it shows the five years, how it's spaced out. So we've got the list there. And so the water master plan is dated 2011, but development hasn't really occurred that quickly. So even though there's approximate timelines given in the master plan, it's nothing to be alarmed at that some of these projects were identified to be built five years ago. It's—it's just something—it's also more of a relative timeline. So we've—we picked out the Portal Street Mercantile, Aaron Main Replacement, and there's the figure in the report. And then the Cypress Tank, we're looking to have constructed towards the later part of this five-year period, the fourth year, 2023, 24. And it has booster pumps and a main that are related to that, and you've probably heard that project described numerous times. Well, 1A and Well 3, this is more a maintenance rehab effort. So they have current treatment facilities and they're working fine. It's just we're looking at the usable life for those and trying to be proactive to replace them before they fail. Coating—we have a 1 million gallon tank up on the hill, and we're looking to recote that. Chlorination equipment and distribution system monitoring. That's more putting instrumentation out of the system to capture pressures, water—the chlorine residual. And then also with the automated metering, we have the ability to have regular, you know, real-time data on our production, not just our—what's being taken out of the meter. So then we can compare the two and figure out what our losses are in the system, so. All right, the next one is the sewer department, sewer utility, and it ties into community services and facilities policy, 2.18, maintain adequate sewage conveyance infrastructure to meet existing and projected demand throughout the life of the general plan. So again, we have a sewer master plan. However, we have built quite a few projects as of late. Remember the P1 sewer that went on Gravestine Highway under the interchange there? That was a $5 million project and bottleneck for the entire city. So when that went in, we all cited—we gave sigh of relief because that was—that bought us a lot of time into the future for that capacity, as well as meeting an existing deficiency. And then this year, ahead of our roadway projects, we're enlarging pipes in William and George—William and Olaf Streets, and that—you will not see that in the CIP because we've—we made a budget adjustment because we want to get those pipelines and dig up those streets before we pave those streets this summer. So that is—the my point is, we're building a lot. We've built a lot of sewers, and so we're all caught up. And so when what we see in the five-year period moving forward is we're putting the emphasis into tightening up the system, so reducing leaks because that's how we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck and reduce our wastewater treatment plant bill, which is 80% at least of our entire utilities budget. And just overall, this is not going to be easy to do because we have a pretty tight system right now. We have—as systems go, we have very little response to—a much lower response to storm events than other cities, other other systems. Okay, then moving on to the street grouping. It ties into the circulation objective, which—to ensure that the city's circulation network is maintained and improved over time to support build-out of the general plan in a manner that is consistent with the city's circulation diagram. So what I want to emphasize here is the word maintain. So many decades went by with the streets being—I don't know, neglected is the word just because we didn't have—the city did not have sufficient funding to keep up with the streets degrading. And so we are in a bit of a catch-up mode with our roadways. And so the last two years, we've spent significant funds and are seeing a big improvement in our roadway, you know, in our roadways overall. And then there's an index that's now over 60. It got to 61 out of 100, which is getting into the good category. So this is a significant piece of the capital improvement program, which reflects the city's emphasis on maintaining our roadways at this time. And so with these projects, I already mentioned, there's relations to other efforts. You know, I mentioned we're accelerating a couple sewer projects to get out of the way because we have a more—a five-year moratorium on a new street. We don't allow people, even ourselves, to dig up brand-new streets or rehabilitated streets. And then also, we—staff looks at the bicycle pedestrian master plan to see what of those improvements we can roll into the maintenance program. And so we've—the first five there are the straight out of the pavement preservation CIP that was presented back in October. And we peeled that piece off to give it a lot of attention because of the money, and it just deserved a lot of attention. So we were able to bring that and plug it into this effort. And so you'll see the Myrtle Avenue Bicycle and Ped improvements. That lines up with one of those years because we're—one of those years we rehabbed the Myrtle Street—Myrtle Avenue. I don't know if you—okay, yeah, just take my word for it. Let me see, it's a—okay, it's the 2022. It's 2020—it's the third year, so it's going to match up with that. We've got the West School Street Pathway Phase 2. So we were on the verge of building that last year, and one of the mitigations was we had it constructed during the dry month, and it was October. We're like, so we just missed that window. So it actually kicks into the first year of the CIP. Old Redwood Highway Traffic Flow Improvements is in here. So we're spending design money this fiscal year to construct it next year. And those are installing a traffic signal at William George and then install—uh, installing compatible time controllers on the one—on the on-ramp there at Commerce, Highway 116, and then the new William George in the East Gattati Avenue and getting them timed. And we did get a question when we approved—when the council was considering and eventually approved the design contract to about the pedestrian crossing there. And it's independent of that timing, so it just is what it is. Let's see, Loretto. All right, so there are some projects that are not, like, triggered or listed in these master plans, and those are sort of the smaller ones that kind of are grassroots driven by the community. One of them is the Loretto to McGinnis pathway improvements. So we did do that lighting project across the bridge, but anyone walking through there recognizes that the pavement has some, you know, can use some improvements to smooth it out. And so that we're looking at including that in this five-year period. And then we've got wave-finding bike and ped signage phase 2. Just as an update on that, we're moving forward with Phase 1. We've done the design, the community development department led by JP Eras, and finished—wrapped up the design and now handed it to engineering, and we're going to deliver the project before June 30th, when we have to spend the money for the grant. So this—that—that present effort is year zero of this, so it's not in the CIP. So we're looking at Phase 2, which is we don't have sufficient funds to do the entire wave-finding, so we're splitting it up into the continuous signage for pathways to get people places, but not the kiosks. And I think there's other improvements. So we've had a logical split in that program, and we're just going to divide it up into more than one year. Okay. I pressed the wrong button. All right, so the next group is drainage, and it ties into the conservation policy, prioritize the use of natural features such as bio swales, vegetation, retention ponds, and other measures to remove surface water pollutants prior to discharge into surface water. So our drainage historically was focused on flood control, which it still has to do. But the emphasis in this day and age is to—to—for the first flush is to clean that water and slow it down and to retain it so it can settle in. And so these projects here reflect meeting our MS4 permit, which is all about water quality. We—as I say, we don't want places to flood, so new development will have—it's almost like you've got to think two different ways, you know, bipolar on this. You think about the low flows doing all these treatments and storage, and then the high flows, we still have to take care of and make sure we express that water to the creeks and the laguna so before floods the properties. Okay, so the year—I had mentioned the trash implementation program. It's got a 10-year period of its own, and it's—it's pretty strict, that 10-year period because at year 11, if we haven't accomplished all those projects in the trash implementation plan, we could be in violation of our permit. So this is more just pulling directly out of that plan. There's—it defines these five or six trash areas of medium where we have to, you know, do something, install screens at the inlets or in the outlets just to capture the trash, get it 100% secure that you're capturing the trash before it goes into the creek. So that's what—that's what these are, and the trash areas are shown in the figures in the report. I think the final year, we have the master plan, just because the master plan was done in the 80s, I think, so it's—it's pretty outdated at this point. So within this five years, it's—we staff is—
Sorry, what was done in the 80s?
The stormwater master plan.
I think it was 2004, wasn't it? Anyway.
Yeah, I'm—okay, that—you might be correct. It's old. It's—I thought it was older than 2004, but I'm not going to quibble with that. Yeah. Yes. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so the next department is the parks, which has the objective, maintain and expand the park and recreation network. And a few meetings ago, this body was presented with the parks master plan, and so it should be pretty fresh on everybody's mind. What we did here was pulled a family of projects out of there to try to touch on a number of different parks. We've got—and even within, for example, the Putnam Park, we can only do a part of a project. We can't do the entire project because the project's like $3 million. And so we've identified, looking at where our priorities are, this—we actually, quite honestly, chose $150,000 and said, okay, we're going to do the dog park or, you know, maybe one of the dog parks with that, or see how much of the pathway around Putnam Park we can get done. So that's how this one's done. For other projects, for roadway projects, for example, you know, you say, this is—this is what we want to pave. How much does that cost? And we can scale back the roadway, but we have to do a complete roadway. So it's the same idea, but we don't want to get the expectations too hard—the too high that we're doing complete retrofit of Helen Putnam Park in the CIP. We're going to take bite-sized pieces of it. La Plaza Park, we should be able to demolish that playground structure and I hope for 150, put in a new one. We don't have detailed cost estimates behind these these projects, so there might be some shifting and changing as we revisit this each year. Okay, so basically, the takeaway is we're doing improvements at Helen Putnam Park, La Plaza Park, Civic Center Park here on this campus, Fletti Park, and Fletti Park. Okay, so the last grouping of projects is in the Buildings Department. And the goal it ties into is provide high-quality public services and facilities to all residents, businesses, and visitors in Gattati. So the facilities ties in with with all the public-owned buildings that we have. The Billing Department, you know, we provide all these over-the-counter services and support services to the public. The building projects are three. At the Civic Center roof and refurbishments, those are the community center with all the classrooms. We roof that. Civic Center complex miscellaneous improvements that might include—this is really not well-defined, but it could be repaving our parking lot here, maybe redesigning it, and improvements to, I believe, the chambers here and just looking around at modernizing these offices. And then City Hall repainting. These are just specific items that we pulled out to put on the list. Okay, so after deliberation tonight, let's say we have the conformance with the general plan, the Planning Commission can send it on to the city council, and you're welcome to have us, staff, include comments in that—in that package. Because the next step is that the CIP goes to the city council for adoption, and we could say it's recommended by the Planning Commission, and they found, you know, they had these comments. With that, that concludes the presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to questions.
Thank you very much. I think it's a very good—to see the plan. I can see a lot of work. I know how much goes into this. So questions?
So with your comment on—this is going to go to city council. If we see something that we would like to put into the capital improvement project— If we see something that we would like to put into the capital improvement project that's not in here, is this appropriate for us to say something now?
That's certainly appropriate, yes.
Okay. Because I, I know, I mean, when I look at this, I know that it seems like it's kind of a planned-out process of what you're taking this year. But if we'd like to include something, this is going to go to city council for the final improvement, approval.
Right. And the timing is pretty critical because right after that, we have these strategic planning sessions and budget sessions for the adoption of the annual budget. And then next year, it starts all over again. So this isn't a five-year process. This is, it's an every-year process. So I would recommend anything that, special areas of emphasis, we, we handle within the updates. Like I know the bike pad master plan is, is being updated during the next, within the year. And so that would be the real, the appropriate venue to, you know, get that, that master plan tied up with, consistent with our general plan and really emphasize certain types of projects. And then that would be reflected in our next go-around of this five-year, five-year city, CIP.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a question. Um, well, I'll let people ask questions and.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm usually the money guy, and I did all the numbers. And I couldn't find any errors this time. Quite surprising. As I understand from our last discussion, this is a big-picture discussion, correct? And then we, the, the specific things that happen, happen as they are funded or if they are funded. Am I correct in saying that?
That, that is correct. Those roadways are a great example of that. Once we get the bids in, and we don't have the funding for it, we scale back the project. And what doesn't get built that year can move into the following year. And so it's a constant, you know, it evolves and changes. That's why we'd like to come back to it every year. It's, it's a plan.
So we're not saying, we're not saying yes or no to something specific. We're looking at an entire package. Is that correct?
That's correct. When you said we're, we're not, we're not actually making the discretionary decision to move forward on these projects. That happens with the adoption of the annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is a plan.
Now, in your proposed funding, I see a lot of measure G showing up. And measure G is certainly, I've seen signs all over. It seems to be a very effective measure. Does not measure G have a lifespan? And do any of these other proposed income streams have lifespans where they stop?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think the measure G expires in three years. If the measure G does not get renewed, then we do not have funding for any of these improvements.
Okay. Because of bulk of your things. For example, in, I think it's sewer, you have seven or eight times more things planned in 2025 than you do this year. And you're, you're hoping, I guess, that measure G will be continued. Because that's, that's how you're saying you're going to pay for it.
We have to be careful because of water and sewer, those are independent of the general fund and measure G. They're, they're their own utilities. And with Prop 218, the city periodically, we, we can adjust our rates to recover our expenses for those utilities. So that's why every couple of years or so, we do, do a sewer water rate study. And we, we evaluate, okay, we need a 4% rate adjustment this year or something. So we, we can't, it, those are financially independent utilities.
Well, as you men, as was mentioned in the last meeting, there's no adjustment for cost of living or anything, any inflation. But, you know, that's, that's a, that's a tiger with a pretty long tail to try to catch at.
Well, the, the purpose and the use of, it's all brought to current dollars.
Yeah.
And which reflects the primary purpose of the five-year CIP, which is to inform the annual budget process, which of course is in, you know, 2019, 2020, current dollars.
Yeah.
And so we, we could make the decision to inflate all the outgoing years, but.
Well, that's based on an assumption.
Yeah. I mean, but it's, it's a snapshot so that when, 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 when we come around next year and we move them back, they, they'll get inflated to the 2020 or 2021 dollars. And so it still serves its purpose.
Okay. And my last question is that you mentioned capacity for sewer and drainage. And that we hadn't come close, or we hadn't reached any critical points. Have we come close to overtaxing our existing system?
Or specifically.
For drainage or for sewer? You, you were talking about sewer when you mentioned that.
Right. For, for the sewer system, the P1 pipeline was overdue. Yeah. So, and, and the overflow, you know, any kind of a stressed situation would occur during, like, a very wet winter and a big storm during that wind, wet winter. And so we don't know if, if it would have overflowed or not, but it, it certainly was surcharging above the pipe. You know, these are, these are 10, 15 feet underground. So it was still many feet below the surface of the roadways. But that's the first red flag is when it actually rises above the, the top of the sewer pipe and goes into the manhole. So it was doing that. And it actually does that today in certain manholes, which, which is part of our criteria that we allow the pipeline volume and the manhole volume to, you know, attenuate those peak events. But when it gets to, it was getting really close to our criteria. So having installed that pipe, especially with the Kessing Ranch development and this upcoming Santara Way development, it was critical to get that pipeline in the ground. It was, I think it was 70% existing benefit and 30% future benefit. But it was, it wasn't needed.
So barring a hundred-year storm, we're still within working parameters. We have no emergency.
Yes. Yes. We are, we are good at this time. And so with, with the drainage, that is, that is a different issue. Because a lot of our drainage systems are very short. It gets it from development to the creek. And there's creeks all over Catati. So it's, we, we have very few lengthy, long storm drain systems. And, and the storm drain systems that are in place are adequate. I mean, you'll see some locations around the hub here that you'll see standing water in the ditches and, but that's, that's how it was designed during high flow, high flow events.
So basically, nothing needs to be moved up to a higher priority because of lack of capacity.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for all this information. It's presented really nicely. And I just wanted to start by saying, reviewing the completed capital improvement projects from 2018 and 19. That was a nice overview and good to see all the great projects we've done. I know I've noticed it in my time walking through the community and utilizing our downtown area. I had a couple of questions about the parks section, just specifically around prioritization. So I know that a few months back, we had a presentation on the parks master plan. And there was a lot of great stuff included in there. I understand we can only pick and choose certain items to fit within the budget. My two questions were, could you just explain a little bit more how we prioritize? What is put into this plan? And then also, I didn't see any grant funding. And I recall in that previous presentation, there was a lot of talk about a mini-grant. And I don't know if maybe we just don't include that in this, if that's separate. But I was curious about that as well.
Thank you. Great, great questions. The, the park master plan, I don't believe prioritized the projects. It includes a section on each of the parks. And then there's a cost break, cost estimate for what it would take to implement all those improvements at each of the sites. So if you're looking, there is no correlation between the projects listed in the CIP. No one-to-one correlation. Like, oh, this is project P5 or whatever, and this is project P5 in the master plan. It's, so what we had to do was take a site like Putnam Park and just subjectively say, well, you know, we have had a lot of community input requesting a dog park. And so we said, let's, let's see how much of a dog park we can get for $150,000. And we know a walking path is another item that the public can get a lot of benefit from. Because again, Putnam Park, I think had a $3 million, shook the nuts for the whole thing. And that was just untenable. We, we wouldn't even know, even if it was phased in two or three different things, that's a million dollars a phase. And we're looking at a budget of 150,000. So we're just trying to move it forward. And that's what our thought process was, to take components out of the master plan that we felt had the biggest community benefit.
And then, sorry, did I miss it?
The grants. Okay. Sorry. Yeah. So the grants, it's our procedure in these documents, if, to handle grants in that they're, they're not guaranteed, you know. So we leave that lying blank every time. And then if the, when the, if and when the grant becomes available, we can have that discussion, bring up proposed project before the planning commission, council to say, hey, we, we have a million dollars to do playground structure replacements. And what do you think about that? So we move forward with this application. And so it's, it's handled that way. So this is more keeping with the known, what we know, rather than, and try to keep the estimates and projections to a minimum. And grants or something that we just have no control over. It's not until you get awarded the grant. You, you don't know if it's going to be competitive, it's going to be, or, or what. So those are typically left out of here. Also, it would just be too much oscillating back and forth. This project is in, it's out, it's in, kind of a thing. Hope that helps.
Yeah. Thank you. My other question also has to do with kind of the planning perspective of this. I know you mentioned that we're prioritizing specifically the water infrastructure projects to correlate with the restoration of our streets. But I, I wasn't sure if you could provide a little more information on how we kind of schedule and strategize the work for other, other work that we anticipate. And what I'm thinking here is, like you mentioned with the water project that happened this past year, I know, living nearby, it was done as best, as best as possible. But of course, it was an impact to all of us. And so knowing that we have so much coming into the community and some growth happening, are we able to plan far enough out to prioritize these projects with any other development that we're anticipating in the next five years?
I think you're, you're mentioning the sewer project because that was the one big project on 116.
Yeah. Thank you.
So with the utilities, we try to build up the, the fund balances. And, and, and definitely, the, the, how long it takes for development, private development project to develop. I mean, the Village, Catati, Catati Village project, I think the property owner there say, this has been like a six- or seven-year process, you know. So we get plenty of time. It's not like someone comes in and then two months later, we have a 50-unit subdivision being installed. So we did, we do get lead time on it. And, and that played out with the P1 sewer. Because that, that was, I think, the third attempt to build that sewer. The first attempt was with the interchange, like, hey, Caltrans is here digging up our roads. This is a perfect time to put in the pipeline. And that didn't pan out. I think that the construction drawings were just too late, you know. And then we didn't lose hope. And two or three years after that, we, we pushed it forward again. But then the sewer utility was having hard times. And it just didn't have the funding for it. And then the third time was a charm when we said, we just, we have all these developments happening. We absolutely have to get this thing in the ground. So I know that doesn't sound very poetic, you know, very coordinated. But we do have the master plan, and we do keep an eye on it. You know, with pipelines, and we do get input from our public works crews out there. They go on and routinely under storm events, pop manholes and kind of gaze. And that feedback comes into us. So we keep a, we, we monitor the systems pretty closely. And if something's out of whack, we'll, we'll look to our master plan and pull out a project and, and get it in the pipeline. You know, with, with the sewer and water funds, we, we have been making some pretty big expenditures lately. So, you know, I think on the sewer fund especially, we're, we have to kind of wait a little bit to, for those reserves to build back up again. I think similarly with the water fund. But we do keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
I've got some questions, and we can come back to, round again on the committee and stuff. I definitely appreciate having the view. This gives very much more of a deeper view for where Catati is planning things and the different projects. So it's absolutely excellent to get that. I, I'm wondering, just based on past history, knowing things, the, the water monitoring system, the whole SCADA implementation. I mean, there was a big plan to begin with. I'm just wondering where it's at in terms of, of what you're planning with that. And particularly, the security side of it. I know I bang that drum periodically because it's, it's a very hard one. But can you comment on the status of it?
I, I can. So we've made great strides. The, the, the big push on this SCADA project was to take us off an archaic system that was no longer being, you know, maintainable. Because the software and the hardware was not supported anymore. And got it onto modern servers, modern software. And that currently resides there at the corp yard. And chlorine analyzers, we were able to then tie in instruments and equipment to, and machinery to that system. It's a hub now. And, and for example, with the sewer flow meter, we used to have no control over it. It used to be down by Stony Point. And Santa, City of San Rosa got the signal. And we'd have to ask them for the signal and the data. And now we have one installed on Hellman, right down the street from our corporation yard. It's ours, it's under our control. And we, it's reversed. We sent San Rosa the data rather than the other way around. And so that is, we, we have, we installed the equipment there. And, and we have a contract, as we speak, to have a integrator radio in that signal to the SCADA system, into the tag server. So again, we're benefiting from having that modern system. We, just this past year, each of the wells has a chlorine analyzer. And we would have to manually go through on our daily routes and check what the chlorine residual is coming out of those wells. Those are now tied in to SCADA. So you can just graph them, chart every minute that we get the data. And it can alarm if it goes too low, alarm if it goes too high, you know. So all those safeguards are now in place. That's light-years from where we were before.
Right.
Future improvements, we're looking at the PSPS events. And having the system at the corp yard where we do not have backup generator power is a vulnerability. And so we're looking to relocate the server system to this campus here where we have the generators. So we have standby power. the generators, so we have standby power. If those are going to be, as we all kind of likely suspect, more regular events. So that's in the future, is to relocate the server and to provide laptops to at least the superintendent in the engineering department to monitor the system remotely. That's about it.
So on the security side, I mean, it's had a lot of visibility, and of course, I mean, there has been attacks on Iranian SCADA systems, which we won't, we don't know where those sources came from, but certainly with the internet, we're actually on the front line, everywhere is on the front line, should, should other people decide to try things. Just where are we at with the security, and specifically, what are the people being trained and being given clear indications? If you have a SCADA system that you take home, do the kids get to play with it? I mean, how secure, there's always a weak, the weakest link in a system like that is always the, you know, one system that becomes available or gets a virus on it. So really, I'm asking you just about the security and the, you know, what are you putting on, on the staff for security requirements?
There's, there's practices, so we do not have the SCADA system connected to the enterprise system here. So every time we have a Windows update or in-code update here, our budgeting software, they do not, KLH does not go down to the corp yard and touch that computer down there. It's under a separate contract, so that's one measure, and there are others. I just don't want to violate the anti-terrorism vulnerability assessment, because it's got, it's requires us to have, you know, certain reserve about discussing it, but...
But you can say, as far as you're concerned, the security, you're feeling supported in getting all the security requirements you need?
Yes, and that is a good, a really good ongoing discussion with, with all the aggressions that are happening, at least in the financial markets, and getting our credit card information and all those breaches that happen. It's certainly something that I think we should keep apprised of, so.
Good, thank you. The, the new pressure system on top of the hill that you're talking about, just a little bit of background, I mean, I had a pinhole leak in my pipe a couple of years ago, and it seemed to happen in December when the pressure went up. So when you say there's a new pressure zone for, I guess, the Cypress tank, what does that cover? Is that for the whole city, or is that just for the hills where there's low pressure?
For the hills that have a low pressure. So the city's gotten by with having one pressure zone.
Okay.
Now operates today, but this is proposing to have a second pressure zone for those homes that are at higher elevations. And so it's, involves the installation of that Cypress tank, which serves by gravity, the zone here. But then what we're proposing is to put in a booster pumping station and a hydro tank to actually pressurize a second zone that could be 80 to 100 feet higher in pressure than the others. And many, many homes up in that area have their own private booster systems, which are problematic.
I know we've approved some of them.
Yeah, so those would, those would be precluded, negated, if we came in with this pressure zone.
With that Nelson Lane new pipes, there's been some comments that it could be made into a safer area and perhaps have a dual usage. Is that coming into the design considerations at all?
I'm sorry, Nelson, Nelson Lane?
Yeah, so the, I believe that pressure system up to the Cypress tank is a city-owned road.
Yes.
And I guess some of the neighbors have commented that there's, I guess the fences have come down there, and it could be possibly be used as a linkage across to the other side of the hill, a pedestrian linkage. So is, I hope nothing's been done to prevent that future. I guess there was a direction given at one of the city meetings that, that the linkage across there should be maintained, though it's obviously needs to be safe.
Yeah, I would encourage that discussion. I think our priority, our focus on the water system has been to, you know, maintain our pipelines, provide adequate storage, and so that is something that I would have to look at, look to somebody with a little more history here and see if there's been, what the, what the issues are with that.
I think they just, the direction that I think John Deloso gave at one point was, is that enough to, to city manager, was nothing should be done to preclude pedestrian access, should it ever be designed in in the future?
Yeah, I would just ask that it be coupled with caution as to, you know, potential terrorist activity or vandalism on our water system components.
Right. But I mean, we have, we have the parks in Santa Rosa that have big tanks on them, so, you know, I mean, I think there's other ways of doing that.
There certainly seems opportunity there.
Yeah, so the, really, I'm pleased with the bicycle and pedestrian upgrades that were identified in the 2014 plan. I mean, they've been going forward and appreciate that we're doing some, you know, there's some difficult ones like the pedestrian crossing at Loretta to McGuinness. That was a surprise to see that that's being looked at and very, that looks like keeping, getting that connection in there would be very valuable. The pedestrian wayfinding plan is really excellent. What are we doing, though, in terms of, the city's identified that there is a climate emergency and passed a resolution. One of the most effective ways of reducing greenhouse gases and bringing on more healthy citizens or a healthy place is pedestrian active, is pedestrian connections. And that's safety. I mean, talking to everybody, it's safety all the time that comes up. So I know I've raised this before on the Highway 116. We have a process in the past that has always resulted in things being done as an afterthought for pedestrians. Is there anything that can be done in this situation where the, if, if there are actions triggered, like a new junction at Alder Lane, which we talked about before, that there's sufficient available funds to complete the small connections on the other side, to make it a more pedestrian accessible area? Because we have West Catati, we have, we have the Northwest Catati, Catati cottages, which is a pedestrian island. It's been identified, they've been built 15 years ago. I mean, the 2015 general plan identified that there could be pedestrian crossings, or there will be when there's the appropriate sort of issues come up. But if there was an infrastructure improvement that was there, can, is there, how do we, how do we plan for that situation and make sure that the, the small amounts compared to the other parts of the budget for improving the pedestrian sidewalks in that area would be put in place? How does that work for a plan like this?
Yeah, the, those improvements, especially over on 116, are predicated on, are dependent on the private development coming in. And so when, when this city is faced with a private development or a Caltrans expanding the roadway, that's the time when we're giving the opportunity to review and evaluate those plans to incorporate the bike bed features. And it's, it's really out of, we don't, as I said before, we don't have a lot of control over the timing of those projects. We have no control. And so that, but that would be the opportunity. So when you see a project like Catati Village, or Assisted Living, or any of those ones, the marketplace between Lowe's and the villages, which isn't active right now, but when that comes around, that would be the opportunity to get those linkages in place. And then you would also install that traffic signal there at West Catati Avenue, straighten out that roadway, put a traffic signal, and actually have a place, a safe landing for pedestrians on, on the south side there of Highway 116, instead of just a ditch as it is today. So when those projects come to our attention, better believe it, we're looking at implementing the general plan, which emphasizes putting these linkages in. So that's how they get picked up.
Good, well, that's good to, good to hear. That's fingers crossed for the process. I mean, it's, I like seeing the plan here, but that's one of those things that's a lot harder to, to plan, but I think it's critical with some of the vision zero that California's coming up with, the number of people that are getting killed on the roads, pedestrians, so it's a perennial problem. When it comes to, I think you addressed some of that with the parks, how do, at the moment, there's a specific, I mean, you've identified a budget with a title for a park, a dog park in a couple of areas, $300,000 for various dog parks. When that actually comes up for design review or with the public, if the public came in and said, well, actually, that isn't what we want, would, would at that point be able to take input and would there be a process? We've had one parks outreach, and I haven't seen what the results were of that, but is it fixed in terms of the design or when it actually comes up again for being, for the real design to happen? I mean, there's a conceptual design now, so how firm is it, is what I'm asking, and where, where are the priorities in that?
I think it's as thorough as what was presented in the Parks Master Plan. So, you know, the figure, the figure there for the dog park is the figure from the Parks Master Plan, and so it outlines a small dog park, a large dog park, and a walking path. So that's what we have to go on at this point. For a project that size, it depends what the design cost is, but if it's over $25,000, then it'd have to come to council for approval, and that's a public hearing. If it's below that amount, then it would have to be staff responding to, or just as good practice, bringing in, opening it up for comment or input on how that should look. But at this moment, it's how it's envisioned in the Park Master Plan, because that went through a series of two or three workshops. So that's...
Yeah, I know these things can cost money, but looking at that $150,000 for fencing, I'm sure there's more that's involved than that, but it seems a lot. But I don't walk dogs, so I don't have that. I like to just get out and walk, so fences are much more of a challenge. So yeah, I think that's, I mean, generally, it's really nice to be able to work through it, and it'll, it'll certainly be a good reference point for the future as we move things through these. Other questions?
I'll say my comments for after public hearing.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, well, so thank you very much. I'll close staff comments here and open it up for public hearing. Is anybody in the public who would like to make, okay Jenny, if you can give us your name, and we won't...
Emergency Resolution, ooh, which was approved in November because it directed staff to evaluate policies through the lens of the climate emergency. And a planning document that's as important as this seems a good place to have that as a reminder that we should be looking through the climate emergency lens for all planning decisions. And it's particularly relevant to talking about bicycle and pedestrian improvements and connectivity, because this is going to be one of the best ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Catati, as well as improving reliable public transportation and access to that, and installing electric charging points. And so, anyway, I'd just like to suggest that you include the Climate Emergency Resolution as one of the key documents to inform this and any other important planning document. Then you're being asked to approve a resolution, finding that the proposed capital improvement program is in conformity with the general plan. And although I understand that Caltrans is responsible for Highway 116, and that developments will happen when, when private developments go in, that will influence the road and what happens to the road, it seems important to at least identify in the plans, I would have thought, safe crossings across Highway 116 as shown in the general plan, figure 2.1 circulation diagram, and some slightly different ones were shown in the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. But at least to have them shown. The current CIP does show improvements north of Highway 116 and south of Highway 116, but with no linkage between them. I see, from a pedestrian bicycle point of view, Catati is totally divided from east to west by 101, except for the school street pedestrian tunnel. And it's also in danger of becoming, or is already, divided from north to south on the west side by Highway 116, which is very hard to walk across without just taking your life into your hands and running in between cars, or going across at one point and then having to walk along Highway 116 so that you can get across on the other side. Seems important, especially to think about this when we're looking at having seniors and assisted living center on the north side. And although not all of them will want to walk, some of them will be fit enough to walk around, and some of them will probably have electric wheelchairs and motorized scooters and things. And also, there could well be children living on that side who need to go to school at Thomas Page and get across Highway 116 safely. So I would urge you to include thinking about alternative forms of transportation in all these planning documents, because we probably won't all be driving around in cars. We'll be finding other ways of getting around, and it would be good to start planning for that more now. And then the third thing from my letter that I'll talk about a little bit is Helen Putnam Park, and just the suggestion that if you're going to put in a dog park where the water from the dog park, running off from the dog park, will be going into the ditches into the lagoon, it seems really important to find a way to clean up that water, and also that would enhance the area aesthetically for walkers. So, and it links in with the conservation policy, PON 1.13, I think it was, that was mentioned earlier on. So I would really suggest that in the Helen Putnam Park, if you do the walking paths and the dog parks, that you also include planting of native trees and plants like sedges and rushes to help clean up the water before it gets into the lagoon. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have got written in public comments. David Lukoff has said, please include safe pedestrian and bicycle crossing on Highway We've got Lori Ann Barber, who has said, dear planning commissioners, I urge you to ensure that safe pedestrian crossing across Highway 116 are included in Catati's capital improvement plan. A nice other letter there about the bicycle commuter that she does. There's from Lynn Deedler, who's again emphasizing bicycle and pedestrian pathways in Catati. I think Lynn Deedler is somebody who's tried to get a connection along the old Sebastopol railway line as well. I have heard about him before. And then there's Deborah Hammond, who has said, dear planning commissioners, I'm writing to ask you to make sure that safe pedestrian crossings across Highway 116 are included. She lives just off Madrone, and understands that Caltrans is responsible, but we have to make it happen, from Isabel Drive. And then there's Jeannie Bendy. And then there's Jeannie Bendick from Marsh Way, "I'm writing to ask that you include provisions to make the area around Highway 116 safer as it's developed. I'm a Qatadi senior citizen who might find myself in the assisted living residence at some point in the future. Being able to enjoy the outdoors without traffic danger is very important." So I've got those letters. And from that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Do we want to, have we addressed everything from the public? Questions that they asked? I don't think there was anything outstanding.
We...
No?
So what I wanted to include in, I don't know if it's going to go with the pedestrian, bicycle master planner, is the two crossings down right by downtown. So one is by Broken Arrow, the crossing right there, and the crossing right by Cafe Salsa. I just wanted to include those in to do some improvements. I think just crossing those back and forth lately, I've almost gotten hit quite a few times. And they're very dark, and at night, and you're crossing, it's very dangerous. So I know we have a lighted crossing down by Co-Housing, we have a lighted crossing now over by the park, by Blue Plaza Park. But right downtown, to me, is very critical, and I just see a real safety concern in that. And I didn't see that addressed in any of this as a priority.
I mean, I'd actually say also that from where I walk at times at night, having a streetlight that shines and identifies you very visibly does seem to be, makes me feel safer, at least at drivers.
And somebody was going 40 miles an hour the other day, and I hadn't pulled my nice council member out of the way, he would have been killed. So, I mean, that little stretch gets cars that drive very fast, and there's no, there's no light signal at all. So if you're walking there, and it's a little bit dark out, and you have dark clothes on, they do not see you, especially in a busy Friday, Saturday night, where there's people walking back and forth. Anyways, I didn't, when I looked through all the master plans, I looked through all of that, I didn't see that in any of the...
It's not in the CIP, but I know exactly what you're saying. I've had the same problem there, both at night and in the middle of the day. Yeah, there are, the drivers sometimes coming through downtown are going way too fast. But these are perfect items that we want to roll into the bike and pedestrian master plan update that we're going to be bringing in the next few months. You'll start to, we'll start to...
I just didn't, yeah, I looked all through the capital improvements, and like you said, I didn't see these as a priority, and I didn't know where to put them in as a comment, so.
I think we could make an addition on this, make a recommendation to the city council that would include that.
I would be in favor of just putting in the 116 crossing, too, just as a prioritize that these three things are critical, and we've had letters on those. You know, can't help to have them at least put in as a note for us.
Okay, just wanted to make a clarification on the Highway 116 crossing. That's, that is wholly developer-dependent, because it has to go in with a traffic signal. And the city on its own, without warrants or a street being reconfigured, will not do that work without development happening on that site.
So as I understand it, though, on that, because I have been looking at that in some detail, we have to come up with a good plan. We have to have the plan that we want. So, I mean, in that situation, I think it's recommending the plan to make sure that it's there, so that if this changes, because it's a Caltrans highway, if the changes actually happen, that it's very, very clear what it is that we want. So I think, I mean, and I understand there would be budgetary impacts on that, but that's what we're talking about, is that. So on that, I would say it's the plan that we have that's very important, rather than specifically the updates, not necessarily doing something on the ground, but having a plan that's very clear, that is very documented from the citizen's point of view. That would be my input on that.
Well, I think, I think we have all these letters about 116 that are included now into the minutes. And I think that's definitely, I saw a priority on that, that people are talking about the 116. And even if we, if we don't make any recommendations at all about 116, we could just put a note in that says this is a critical point for citizens that have come with letters on this, so that at least the council knows that this has been, you know, something that the citizens saw in here that wasn't in here. So whether it's included, to me, or not, in the capital improvements, it's a priority for the citizenry to see, or at least for them to address it, maybe even at the, when they take this into consideration. And maybe Craig can say that, that we're going to make that a priority, that at least people know what's happening at 116 at this time. So people know that at least there's a plan or something, you know, when there is development. So what I think is, people don't understand is, the development has to come in to be able to have these. And so they're thinking that we can just go and do that. So maybe the critical part is that there needs to be more information and education around this, so that people understand that this is coming, and this is the process that's happening.
But in terms of some language, I would say that we recommend that there is more attention paid to pedestrian areas, which would be on Old Redwood Highway, outside the businesses, on the business stretch, making more visibility, making it safer for pedestrians. And that a planning, that planning for the Highway 116 pedestrian connection be completed, which would be in the pedestrian and bicycle plan, would be very visible. But I'm saying the planning, I don't know whether there's a better language on there, because we have, we have elements that could be done by any improvements that happen on the sidewalk. But there's certain elements there that won't be completed by the developers if there's any development that happens. There's, I mean, I know there's a bunch of complex stuff that's happening in that area. There's possible realignments, it's possible all sorts of things. But I think we should have a plan, we should put in the language that there should be a plan that is adequate for that to happen, should it, an adequate plan for any improvements to happen. I'm sounding like a fan.
Well, I think there is a plan. And I think when development happens, there is a plan already...
There isn't a plan. There is not, because I've been through it in detail. And there's a, 2015 general plan has just a little dot. What came before us with the conditions of approval said that if a traffic light goes in at Old Lane, if it's triggered to be able to put in, there's the financing that is there that the developer has to pay for. But it's only for vehicular traffic. There is, the EIR for that senior facility identified that there was a pedestrian crossing. But the actual plan that was put in place does not account for pedestrians and the fact that there would have to be a pedestrian connector of some sort on the southern side of Highway 16. It's not very long. I don't think it has to be very well engineered, but it could be something that is some bollards, perhaps, or just some improvements along there to make sure that people could connect across, perhaps with a flashing light. I mean, if people are going to cross, they're going to cross, but we should have a plan. And I think that plan should be visible within the pedestrian and bicycle plan. And as I understand it, the most important thing is that we have a plan, because it's Caltrans that has to actually do the work, or puts the final plan together. And they're motivated to pay attention to pedestrians if we know what we want to do. But I don't think we do at the moment in our planning.
Would it be appropriate to address the two areas of concern, which I have the same as you, the 116 and also the downtown Old Redwood? Perhaps we could express those concerns to staff and ask them to come up with some verbiage that would adequately express our concerns. But we want that, and we want that to be brought before the council, that we're concerned about both of those areas.
I'd appreciate that, yes. Because that's at all possible, Craig, JP.
I've got the one issue of crossing Highway 1, pedestrian crossing on 116. And so potential language here to forward with the resolution would be, the planning commission finds conformance of the CIP with the general plan and has the following comments for city council's consideration. And I was going to make a list, but there's one that I hear. There's, okay, I'll just do the one that I heard, was include plan to study the provision of a safe crosswalk across 116. And I, sorry, I'm going to have to have you repeat.
At that intersection where the new...
At Alder.
At Alder.
At Alder, okay.
And the other concern is the crosswalk in the center of town.
The two crosswalks in the center of town.
Okay, I think, if I may...
And that can be put into the master plan for the bicycle and...
Better yet. I mean, we could certainly address it in the bicycle pedestrian master plan, but we also have an annual $30,000 in the citywide bike ped safety project. And just past projects as an example that have gone in and that have not ended up specifically in the budget or a five-year CIP are the speed feedback signs and the crosswalk enhancements at Cypress and West Qatadi, West Sierra Avenue. So I, in my mind, the light, putting bollards with lights or somehow illuminating or making those, that crosswalk safer in downtown would fall into that category.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. That's just a black hole right there. There's no streetlight, there's no protection, and it's always dangerous. And even driving past there, you have to...
Also downtown, too. I mean, it's part of our community.
Am I hearing it correctly, that that would be kind of a temporary solution of bringing something like the speed signage? I'm not sure if I understood you...
No, I was having, providing examples of what projects we've completed under this annual bike, citywide bike ped budget we have. And so this appears to me would fall within that category. The city staff would just go off and study what measures we could do to those two crossings in our downtown across Old Redwood Highway. And if one looks, you know, if it looks feasible, we'd just go ahead and install it. I don't know if it needs to land in the bike ped master plan or even find its way into the five-year plan, we just go into it.
I'm happy with that. I mean, I think it's just that recommendation that it would be as part of that, however it rolls out with the staff and...
I'm fine with that, too.
You could say the two crossings would be included in the 2021 citywide safety program.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Good.
I think, I think a nice council member would, who almost got killed there the other day.
Don't want that, don't want anybody getting...
Yeah, very scary.
So any more comments? Do I have a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion.
Let's get the motion.
Make a motion for the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Qatadi finding the proposed 2020, 2021, 25, 25, 20, 24, 25 capital improvement program...
We're getting there.
...in priority with the city of Qatadi general plan, with the...
Recommendations.
Recommendations included.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Nait?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
That was four to zero. Let the record share. Well, very good. Well, thank you very much. Good to, good to get the overview and, you know, as it rolls out. So we're moving on to item number two. Just make sure it's four to zero. Consideration of a proposed ordinance to amend the land use code to adopt provisions for the development of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in conformance of state law. Just thank you, Craig. Leaving. Yeah, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Paul Harris, I'm senior planner with the city of Qatadi. And tonight, we're going to talk about ordinance for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And first, a couple preliminaries. First of all, I've received no comments on this item at all. It has been noticed in the paper and everywhere for over 10 days now, and I haven't received any comments. But the changes that we're talking about tonight are really being driven by changes in state law. We do have a second unit ordinance, but it's null and void, and it was made null and void in 2016 by the state legislature. Also, this is the first of several amendments related to housing that's going to be coming before you in due time here. But there's a whole lot of things happening throughout the state with respect to housing, and this is the first one that you're going to start looking at. Also, just to let you know, the staff time to amend the ADU ordinance was paid through, it will be paid through an SB 2 grant. We applied for this last year. We saw the writing on the wall with the ADUs and as well as other housing matters. So we made an application for the grant. We were awarded $160,000. And that's going to cover ADUs, what we're calling cottage housing, which kind of is like the old PUD developments that we used to do in Qatadi, as well as looking at by right multifamily development, which right now requires use permits for a lot of it. So before I get into this, what is an ADU? An ADU is what's called, is an accessory dwelling unit, also known as second units, granny flats, in-law suites, or carriage houses, especially back use. And they're independent self-contained dwelling units. They can be detached from or attached to, or even interior conversion of a home. Under law, the primary residence can either be existing or proposed, so someone coming in can propose an ADU as part of a development project to build a single-family home. They're required to have separate access, independent access, so you can't go through the primary in order to get to it. They must have a kitchen, and they must have their own bath. So they are independent living units. They can range in size from about 150 square feet, whatever the building code defines as an efficiency unit, up to 1,200 square feet in size. And they can be accessory to both single-family and multifamily. Some of the new changes that came about in 2019 basically require us to make them, to allow them in multifamily developments. And then what is a JADU? Well, that's a junior accessory dwelling, and they are mostly independent self-contained dwelling units. They're 500 square feet or less. They're constructed entirely within the walls of an existing or proposed single-family residence with, you're allowed to do a little bit of ingress work if you like. They also are required to have a separate access and their own kitchen, but they can share a bath with the primary residence. So often, if there is a JADU and it doesn't have its own bath, there'll be a door that goes into the primary house. That's the big difference, one is the size, the fact that they're, contain interior to the primary residence. to the primary residence, and, and that they can share a bathroom. That's the big differences.
I have a question.
Okay, if, if a question.
I just have a question on this. So would a, would a garage count as that, like a?
So I'm going to talk about garages a little bit, but you can convert a garage to either a JADU or an ADU, depending how you constructed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I read it, that was the target, that was the target space that was being described.
Yes, but I mean, it just, this is so counterintuitive. I'm still shaking my head.
I haven't seen some of the places people have been.
Yeah, well, we're going to talk about garage conversions a little bit because you can do them and you don't even have to, we, we can't require replacement parking for garage conversion under, under the new state law. So anyway, let's get back. So just some background, prior to 2003, we required use permits for an ADU and they came before the planning commission for that use permit. Between 2003 and 2016, we were reviewing them ministerially. Back in 20, 2003, there is a new state law that was passed that required ministerial approval, so we passed ordinance number 746, which basically created our second unit provisions in, in our code. And that existing one, for your own reference, is in there on packet page 113, if you want to review what our current rules are. So currently they're permitted in all residential zones, but they're only for single family homes, the way our rules are written, and we don't allow, we haven't allowed them in mixed use areas, mixed use, commercial mixed use areas, and they're not allowed in industrial areas where we don't have housing. And we have not had any JADUs in, in this city. So six, since 2016, our current ordinance was made null and void when the, when the legislature passed some laws regarding ADUs and set specifically in there, if it didn't comply, your ordinance can't be applied. So we've been operating under state law since then. And just for an idea, I mean, I've talked about how there's a lot of housing, these are just the ADU bills that have come down the pipe in the last three years. I mean, there's 11 bills and there's no need to go through them, but just, just putting it up there to show you, there's a lot of changes in interest in this topic. So I'm going to get right into the changes. The changes that we're proposing tonight can be divided really up into three different areas, and that is there are changes that we need to make to our ordinance to comply with state law. In doing that, there's some elective changes we can make as well, and then there's just clarifying changes, and these are largely just definitions. So the first thing is name change. Our code refers to these throughout as second units, and now they will be referred to as accessory dwelling units. And so our ordinance includes all the necessary name changes in the Catati municipal code to do that, and that is the reason there's such a long title to this resolution, and it goes on and on with many chapters, because in some cases, all we're just, all we're doing is changing second units accessory dwelling in it, but it happens in several chapters and we have to list those. Okay, the other thing is they can be, they can be constructed in multifamily structures and properties. Up to two detached ADUs may be constructed, but they would be limited to 16 feet in height and they could have, and they would have to be set back at least four feet from the side and rear property lines. Also, ADUs can be built within existing multifamily structures, and that includes garages, hallways, basements, boiler rooms, any space that is not being used as a, as living space can be converted into ADUs.
So a quick question on that, providing it's within the structure of the current envelope?
Any structure, so it appears to me that it has, it could be any structure on a multifamily property, so that's why I said if they have a detached garage area, you know, then you could convert those, that area into ADUs. And the number is restricted, you, we have to allow at least one, but you can go up to 25% of the units. So if you have, you know, do the math, it goes up fairly rapidly. Then there's also these JADU provisions, which I kind of discussed already, but no more than 500 square feet, contained entirely within a single family residence, can share a bathroom, must have their own separate entrance, and, and also they require, it looks like they're going to require deed restrictions that would be restricting a separate sale of the units, you can't sell off that little portion of, of the house separately, like you see in San Francisco with the tenancy and commons or very common agreements in that city. And it would also be restricting the size of the unit, can't expand behind, beyond the 500 square feet. We have to allow for both an ADU and a JADU to be constructed on a property. The big thing with this is this really would allow up to three units on a single family zoned property. Some have referred to this as the end of single family zoning, but, but that's, we have to be able to permit that. As far as zoning, they cannot be banned. We can't as a city decide we don't want ADUs here and ban them. We have to basically zone for them where we can, and really the only considerations we can take into, the only thing we can take into considerations is water and sewer capacity, traffic, and public safety. So at this point, we're recommending changes in all our residential areas, all our mixed use areas, and that would include Santero Way, um, excuse me, that would include the downtown specific plan, but we are not recommending changes to Santero Way at this time. Santero Way, the street itself is dead end street, it's, roadway width is substandard, there's already parking impacts, and there's still quite a bit development capacity in that area, as well as some projects that came online, and it's got a lot of multifamily development in there, and so we don't think we want to go down that path right now with Santero Way. Let's see how this shakes out. That's something that the commission may have a comment on or not. Or recommendation, excuse me. Required parking. Our city, currently our ordinance requires one parking space for an ADU, in addition to the parking that's required for the primary residence. Under the new law, no parking would be, we, we can't require any parking for a JADU, and no replacement parking if a garage or carport is converted to an ADU. And no required parking if within one half mile walking distance from transit and includes any bus stop, and those asterisks are there because when I did a map of Catati and do it, did a half mile circle around every bus stop that there was, it pretty much, the whole city was covered. The language changed in 2019, so now it says half mile walking distance, so I'm assuming it's going to be about the same. There might be a couple residences on the, on the west side that wouldn't be within half mile walking distance, but there tend to be larger properties where parking's not going to be an issue for them anyway. So I'm just saying, I just would assume that we're not going to be able to require parking for ADUs in general. Okay, under our current ordinance, the size of an ADU is regulated by the size of the So currently, we can't really regulate, if you look at our ordinance, it started at like 500 square feet, went up to about 900 square feet on the largest properties. Right now, the, the most we can limit, we have to allow at least an 850 square foot ADU if it has less than two bedrooms, and if it's a two bedroom ADU, we have to allow at least 1,000 square feet, so we can't put greater limits on the sizes than that. This is where it gets a little bit confusing, but those are the limits that we can apply. But we have to allow for an 800 square foot ADU if they run into some of our development standards. So currently, you must meet all of our development standards, like you have to meet your land coverage, the setback requirements, and when it comes to ADUs that are attached to the primary residence, or we, we would control the floor area of an ADU based on the floor area of a primary, so you couldn't exceed 40% of the primary with the ADU. Now, that, that basically goes away, we have to allow the 800 square foot ADU irrespective of coverage, open space, or the floor area compares, compared to the, to the primary. And then I gave some examples there, like the lot coverage in L, NL districts, which is our neighborhood low density, which is really most of Catati neighborhoods, all the, all the L section, the bird streets, all that area. They can't exceed 40%, and most of those properties are already at or over 40% actually. So even though they, our rules say they can't exceed 40%, they still, even if they're right at the limit, could still do an 800 square foot ADU. Okay, previously, we limited ADUs to 20 feet and we must maintain the side and rear setbacks. Just for example, in L, in, in the NL zoning district, the side setback is about five feet, and it's 20 feet from the rear. So that really prevented a lot of people from developing an ADU because they can't meet those setbacks. But like I said, the ordinance must allow for an 800 square foot ADU, even if you're running into land coverage issues. And the ADU, we can't limit it to a lower height than 16 feet. So 16 feet and four foot side and rear setbacks, under state law, we must, you know, that's, that's the greatest limit we can put on them is a 16 foot limit and four foot side and rear yard setbacks. I apologize if I'm not speaking well. I've been terribly sick. Actually, wasn't even at work today, and my head is not, not, not right.
Thank you, I should have checked if you wanted to keep on going, I know you mentioned that.
No, I do, I do, I want to, I want to get through this. Minimum lot size, there's no, right now, we, we do limit ADUs based on the lot size. For example, if your lot's less than 5,000 square feet, you can't, can't build an ADU. Now there is no minimum lot size for an ADU. Can't prohibit any property from building an ADU, no matter how big it is. And then some of this has been around for a couple of years now, fire sprinklers typically in the past prior to 2016, if you built any residential unit, even accessory dwelling unit, you would be required to put in fire sprinklers. Now the law is that you don't, you don't, we can't require them if they're not required for the primary residence. So if someone was building a new home, they would be required to put in sprinklers, the ADU would have to have sprinklers there. Utility connections, we cannot require separate utility connections, and we cannot assess connection fees for utilities. This is not really going to impact the city because we don't allow separate connections for ADUs anyway, just as a practice, and so therefore we don't charge for connection fees. So there's, really, that shouldn't impact anything here. Development impact fees, these are things like traffic fees and parking lieu. New state law says no development impact fees for ADUs less than 700 and square, 50 square feet. I have a feeling that's going to become a magic number. Everyone's going to probably build their ADUs to be less than 750 in order to avoid those fees. And then for ADUs greater than 750 square feet, the fees must be proportional in relation to the square footage of the primary residence, and I'll tell you now that many of us in the planning community are trying to figure out what that means exactly, and how we're going to be able to, be able to apply that. So that, that's going to come at a later date, and it'll require city council approval to set those fees, so until then, we won't be collecting those fees, and we haven't been anyway for the last few years. We've been treating ADUs as basically additions to primary. A lot of communities have owner occupancy requirements, that is, an owner must occupy either the primary residence or the ADU. We don't have that, and right now, they're saying they cannot, we cannot require owner occupancy for at least the next five years. That provision is, is written to sunset in 2025. I don't know if that will actually happen, but for the next five years, we couldn't, couldn't implement that kind of requirement if we wanted to. We can require owner occupancy for JADUs, and in the staff, the written staff report, one of the things that I left out of the electives was to talk about this, this part, but I did put a slide in here to, to, to talk about whether or not we want owner occupancy in junior ADUs. I'll say that, talking internally, we didn't think that that was necessary. We have a lot of college, you know, college homes, people share bedroom, not share bedroom, but you know, share houses, and we felt like, you know, it's people's choice if they want to live with, with, where they might be sharing a bath with another, with another party. But again, we're totally open to recommendations from the planning commission. Rentals and sales, they can always be rented separately from the primary, you, you can rent, rent the units independently, but they cannot be sold independently. There is a new section in the government code, came out in 2019, that actually allows recorded tenancy and common agreements if it was built in certain conditions, and that's if like a nonprofit built it for affordable housing, and there's, and there's a whole series of restrictions on that, that are written into the government code. And those would be the only kind of ways that you could actually sell part of a, sell an ADU separate from a primary residence, attached, detached, or internal. Again, that's not terribly uncommon, like I mentioned, like in San Francisco, it's very common to see houses divided up into parts and then they, they, they don't, they're not sold independently, or they are, but they're part of a tenancy and common agreement. Okay, and this was where I, you know, the, everything else is kind of like, that's just what we have to do, and those are the changes that we can consider that are more elective. So we're proposing pretty much the minimum for lots under one half acre. So 850 square feet for a one bedroom or studio ADU, that'd be the maximum size, or 1,000 square feet for a two bedroom ADU, and this is on lots less than half an acre. Of course, we did, and the other thing, because this is ministerial, we have no discretion, basically, either it meets these objective standards and we approve it ministerially through a building permit. Well, that, that's what we have to do. So that's why we set that, set this here at 851,000. And then, then we also said, okay, for, if you have greater than a half acre, then you could go up to the 1,200 square foot limit on the ADU. And we kind of picked that break, the half acre break, because that aligns with our RVL and our, our zoning districts, and so we felt like that made sense, it wasn't completely And we also have an out for people that do want to build their larger ADU on a, less than a half an acre, then it's no longer a ministerial application, they would have to come through a design review application process. So then we have some options to consider. That's what we're proposing. The options that the planning commission can consider is a range. You could, for example, say, no, we want to have the minimum, that 851,000 on every property, and then if they want to go beyond that standard, come in for design review. On the, on the other end, you could say, you know what, we don't want to mess around with 800, 800. We don't want to mess around with 800, 850 under this condition, this condition. We're just going to allow 1,200-square-foot ADUs all over the place. And I've seen communities going both ways with this, so. And the other thing is, we could eliminate the design review option. I guess what I want to say, if you, the important things to consider with this is, you know, I think land coverage is an important thing. And I don't want to encourage greater land coverage than we have to because there's groundwater recharge considerations. There's storm runoff considerations when you end up with a lot of land coverage. It's going to result in a loss of trees. And it's going to result in a loss of open space. And then I think there's also neighbor privacy concerns to just allowing them. I don't recommend the 1,200 square feet across the board, is I guess what I'm trying to say, based on these considerations. You know, and feel free to interrupt me if you have questions or anything. We can always move on.
Well, so just on that 1,200 square feet, I'm relating to that a little bit because I did an extension to my house that I started off with a property that was 800 square feet. And we added on a 1,200-square-foot option. We added on 1,200 square feet. So that would be something, and it worked, we're just about at a half an acre, just under half acre. So I mean, that would just make it very easy for other people to do that type of thing. It's, is there any requirements for, in terms of the main residence size? For like a 1,200?
No, no. So your main residence, you know, you can expand within the limits. That has, this has nothing to do with the primary residence. You can expand your primary residence up to the height limit of the zoning district and up to the land coverage limits of the zoning district. So, and then the other, your other question was, let's say you had your 800-square-foot home and you wanted to build a 1,500-square-foot addition and have those be, then that 1,500-square-foot, you can call that, that can become your primary. And then your older 800 square feet can be designated as an ADU. If you wanted to have two units, you can swap it out, yeah.
There's some flexibility.
Okay, so that's unit size based on lot size and our recommendation. The other is, we're proposing that we, that if you are going to be building in those setbacks, so right now, like I said, we have a 20-foot setback in most of our zoning districts. But now state law allows you to build this ADU all the way to four feet of your rear inside property lines. If you're going to be building in that setback area, we're suggesting you're limited to the 16 feet. You can't go higher than that 16 feet. If you're outside the setback, so you're like within the proper setback area, then we say, fine, you can go up to the height limits of the zoning district. That's a little different than what we have today because today, we limit all ADUs to 20 feet. Doesn't seem to be, matter where they are on the property. We're saying, if you can meet your setbacks, there's really no big reason. That was our thought, was no big reason to limit it. We have the setbacks, we have the height limits, and that's fine. So, you know, that's another thing. You may want to consider that we maintain the 20-foot limit. You may want to have 16 across the board. Things to consider, again, is the bulk enassing on properties that you're going to see. And again, privacy of neighbors. The taller these are, the more privacy issues you tend to have. And when you get four feet from someone else's property line, there's going to be privacy issues. Steve, do you have a question? Okay. And then this is something that unfortunately wasn't in the packet, but is here. And that's the J-ADU owner occupancy. Right now, we're proposing that it's not required. And the options are basically to require owner occupancy for a J-ADU. And then the owner can always occupy either the junior ADU or the primary residence. We can't apply owner occupancies to government agencies, land trusts, or housing organizations. So if we did apply this, it would only be to private holders. And one thing, though, this is difficult to monitor. I mean, I don't know how we would monitor it. It would require deed restrictions and then it'd be self-monitoring by the people. Some considerations, there's loss of owner oversight if you're not there. And potential conflicts between residents of the J-ADU and the primary. Oh, okay, I thought I missed one. And then this was, this is one that, actually, several other jurisdictions have done. And we stole the idea from them because we thought it was a good one. Windows. So we're proposing, on the windows that are within this setback areas that are facing another property, that those windows either, excuse me, be clear story, which is six and a half feet at least. Could be a little lower, we're recommending six and a half. Or opaque. And we can't have just clear story because we might run into ingress egress issues. Certain bedrooms, for example, have to have a window you can escape from. So the option is clear story or opaque. That would only apply to the windows that are within the setbacks facing the neighbors. And if they did want to deviate from the standard, again, we're offering a way out, which is the design review application. And then we can consider it in a public forum.
Just to clarify on that, so if the ADU was on a second story, it would have to have opaque windows if it's?
Not, not if it was, if not, I don't think you're going to see that come into play here because no primary residence, let's say it was a second story. So you built an ADU on top of, it says a second story addition to your house. Your house is already meeting the setbacks. So you wouldn't apply this standard to something that meets the setbacks. This only applies to those people that are with, building within the setbacks. And I hope I'm not getting this point confused. But like I said, we have five-foot and 20-foot setbacks. But the way the state law is written, we have to allow ADUs within four feet of a property now. So we're going to be 16 feet into the rear setback. Let's say they put it in their back corner, you know, 16 feet into that setback. So if you're into that setback area, that's when the standard would apply.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay. So options to consider, no window restrictions. We just let people build what they want to build. We could have a lower clear story height. And/or we could, you know, eliminate that design review option. They just must apply for, must go with the standard. Things to consider, internal lighting of the ADU, privacy of neighbors, and ingress and egress. And then not much to say about this. Definitions are, big other changes are clarifying changes. And those are just definitions. A accessory dwelling unit to second unit, or excuse me, vice versa. Getting rid of second unit and going with accessory dwelling unit. Our definition, some of our definitions just point right back to the government code. We thought this was prudent because they're changing. It's like water, some of it. So rather than us having to come back and keep saying what it means, and sometimes they're defining the size of the sink. And so we just said, you know what? We're going to point back to the actual government code where they're, it means what they say it means, is basically what it means. We're also defining what it is to be attached, detached, or interior. We're eliminating carriage house. We're defining efficiency units since it comes up in the code. And again, we're pointing back to the government codes, or excuse me, health and safety code of the California. We're defining floor area since that's coming up now. We actually don't have a definition for floor area because we don't use floor area ratios in this city. And so we have never really felt the need to define it, I guess. Junior accessory dwelling is a new definition. And that, again, points back to government code. We're defining living area and passageway, passageway just for, you know, it's like, basically, some people were saying, well, if water for your ADU to have its own independent access, you must have a passageway that's clear to the sky all the way around, and that's not the case. So we're trying to define what a passageway is, which is basically a clear space all the way to the sky on that passageway. You can pass under or through a carport or something like that, or an eve or overhang, and still have a separate access to the ADU. But state law is reacting to what some communities were doing, which is, you know, requiring this open-air passageway. So that, but anyway, so we're defining that. And then public transit, this has been a moving target also. Like I said, previously, when this ordinance was adopted, people are like, oh, well, you don't mean every bus stop. That bus only comes by there, you know, once a day or once every couple of days. You mean these high-frequency bus stops where you'd have 30-minute headways or a train station. So in reaction to that, those interpretations, the state legislature said, no, we mean any bus stop, so as long as it's within half a mile walking distance. So again, since that seems to be changing, we're referencing back to the government code. And we're getting rid of the definition of second unit and carriage house. And we're also defining tandem parking because not everyone knows what that is. And that's just parking one car behind another legally, you know. So we're recommending you review all the information, hear public testimony, and then make a motion to adopt the resolution, which is attached, is the proposed ordinance, as may be amended by yourselves. And that concludes my presentation. And I'm open for any questions or comments or discussion.
Well, thank you very much. You still remained very lucid through that, so you can take all the questions and... Good, very nicely done.
Thank you.
Still surviving is what I was asking. Okay, so questions from the?
I have a question on the elective changes for the base size. You said other communities have gone with just the 1,200 square feet. Others have gone with the 850,1,000 to the design review option. Has there been any feedback on any of the other cities that have done that?
First of all, I know that they've done it. I haven't followed exactly their process. I've just looked at the ordinance and I've seen it both ways. One is kind of how I've written it, which is right out of the government code. You know, kind of following the government code. And then I think Subastible did the 1,200-square-foot across the board. I have not heard any particular feedback on that, no.
Okay. I have a few questions. First, just kind of an overarching question. Understanding that, you know, much of this is currently put into place and there's not a lot of room for change. I'm just curious if we have any sense of what we expect as far as impacts go. So impacts of, you know, kind of a wave of building and additional occupancy to the community. If we've done any sort of studies or expectations on what we expect there. And then impacts to infrastructure, traffic, et cetera.
Yeah, we, you know, we really don't know. I will say that it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out because now ADUs, not a lot of people were building them in the past. I would say the majority of the ones we've developed in the city have been in conjunction with a subdivision, a larger subdivision, where we've included them in the subdivision. So we were able to look at the larger package and as well as its relative impacts. State law does a couple of other things, which is frustrating for us. One is, we're not allowed to consider it as an increase in density. By law, this does not increase density, and it is in conformance with your general plan. Period. So that's a frustrated thing for us because we do see it as a potential to increase density, especially now with multifamily. So I don't know. No, we haven't done a study, gone out or polled. I mean, we have done some housing surveys. There's been a little bit of interest. And, but the interest is picking up. I don't expect to see this across the board. You know, they're still expensive to build. You're still going to be paying, you know, 250, 300 square foot to build these. They're not cheap. There are a lot of companies that are coming out with some prefab, which I think is going to increase development of them. And we are requiring them to hook up. I mean, I think what, you know, compared to what Craig was saying with the P1 sewer project, is we have capacity now. Water's not a problem for us. We have water capacity. And now we have the sewer capacity, where it may have been a problem in the past. But it's not a problem for us. I am concerned about Santero Way and the roadway capacity there. And that's why we're not recommending that we change it in Santero Way. We know we have issues there. We have roadway issues, we have parking issues, and we're already generating complaints out there. And we got the train station there and several projects to come online. So, you know, right now, I think it's going to be, we're just going to have to sit back and wait and see what happens. So that's all I can say.
My second question is in regards to privacy, which I could potentially see being an issue. Are there any other requirements that we can put into place? Like you mentioned, something minimal requirements like planting trees or other greenery along that property line in situations where we know that it's going to be butting up against a neighbor's home?
We would have to write it right into the law itself because this is a ministerial approval. We don't have the opportunity to review it and then make recommendations. My concern about the trees and the landscaping is it's not permanent. Trees die, people cut their landscaping. I'm cautious to go down that path, though I think it'd be great, you know. And I think if someone was building an ADU right next to me, appearing into my property, you bet I'd be planting some trees that I know I would be maintaining. But that's certainly an option. We could say that you must be planting trees if you're within that four-foot setback area. My other concern with planting trees in a four-foot area is there's fire safety issues. There's going to be foundation issues with the trees growing, you know, right into the foundation. And there's that potentially ingress egress issues of getting out of a residence and, you know, not being able to escape if there were a fire. Those are my thoughts on that. I'm happy to hear anything else on that, or if you want to recommend that we do that.
Then I was also just curious, since you mentioned the fire sprinklers, if there were any other changes to, like, as far as building, you know, a new ADU as efficiency goes, are the requirements, as if it's a new unit that's being built, or would you also just be required to follow whatever, whatever requirements you followed in the original build?
Yeah, the only way, the state law only speaks to the fire sprinklers, probably because that was a real big obstacle for ADU development in the past. They still have to follow every building code thing, all the efficiency standards. All that comes into play. The only pass appears to be the fire sprinklers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, JP. I recommend bed rest and drink lots of wickers. First of all, concerning Santero Way and ignoring it, can we expect any reaction from the state or any penalty from that?
I don't think so. One, I don't even know if they would know that we're not changing it there. I will say, they do have to review our ordinance. So we will be, if it's adopted by the City Council, we will be sending it to them. We must within 60 days, that's part of the new state law. But I think our concerns there are valid. We aren't just willy-nilly. We've opened up the entire city. There's literally just one tiny road where we say, where we're saying, no. There's literally just one tiny road where we say, where we're saying no, and again, it's a dead-end street with numerous documented issues, and existing development capacity that's still coming online. So, I don't think that we would be, that someone could successfully challenge us if we chose to not allow them on Santero Way. I think our reasons for not doing it are solid, and I guess that's what I have to say. I don't know, because we've never had to send in this ordinance to them before.
So, we won't ask the question if we don't like the answer, is that... Okay. We have four electives to look at on, I have an opinion on number four, and I certainly agree with the JADU owner occupancy not required.
Okay.
We don't have the resources to monitor or enforce. We're not going to do DNA testing on anybody, and it's really none of our business who stays there. I'm sure other commissioners will have opinions of the other three. My only other one was for, on elective changes, number one, that we should indeed...
I wonder, actually, could we just ask the questions at the moment, and then we'll come back to that after public input? If that works for you.
Okay.
It's just the normal process that we sort of do on that, but, thank you. So, I would think it's a great document to have here. I'm just surprised at how many limitations we've already had in the sort of the area. So, the, just following my previous rule of not making any comments yet, or I have a bunch of stuff that I think I'd like to say later on, but in terms of questions right now, what you're saying really is the Santero Way, because of the amount of traffic there, that we can say no AD, no JADUs.
No ADUs.
No ADUs or JADUs.
Or JADUs.
Right.
We don't even have single-family, I don't think we have any single-family dwellings down Santero Way, so, wouldn't be a factor for the JADUs, because those only apply to single-family dwellings.
Right. I know Minneapolis just banned all forms of single-family.
It's happening around the country. This seems to be California's way of doing it. They just went through this three...
Made it more complicated and...
Yeah. I could be coming here, too, you know.
In terms of the sizing, you mentioned the sizing of the properties, that there was a 1,000-square-foot limit. Just getting a feeling for that, I mean, I live on just under half an acre, and 1,200 seems to be, I'm wondering if there's another natural limit between half an acre and is there a quarter of an acre for, in terms of the zoning?
Well, you could, we could pick any size you want, if you wanted to establish a size. I selected that because, one, once you're at half an acre, I think you have a large enough property to absorb, you know, another dwelling that's 1,200 square feet in size. Many of the homes in Catati are pretty close to that. And, again, I picked it because our RVL zoning, the cutoff there is half an acre, so, that wasn't arbitrary, it was kind of selected where we already have divisions. But the planning, as the planning commissioner, you could make any recommendation you wanted. Like I said previously, if you look on page, packet page 114, you can see where we set the square footage size based on the lot size, and that, you know, they're just round numbers, is all, you know, that's... So, I mean, so you, you know, you have the ability, you could say, no, I think 1,200 across the board is fine, or you could choose a different lot size. I only picked it because I thought it aligned with our zoning districts, and I think also that we gave an out to those that wanted to do a larger, where they could come through a design review process. That was my thoughts on that. So, it's not a strict, I mean, it's strict in terms of if you want the ministerial approval, but there is a way for you to get a larger ADU.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
I have a question. So, somebody wants to put an ADU on their property, and it's 850 square feet, and they're going through the process on the design of it and the design review of it. Is there still a process through the, or is it now if you hit all the proper windows and the proper this and that, it doesn't really matter what it looks like?
Yeah, yeah. No, there can't be this discretionary aspect to it. Yeah, all these standards have to be objective. So, we could, I haven't seen it done, but we might be able to add something about compatibility, but, again, it's going to be a difficult one to hold, you know, road to hold.
So, I'm just risking, it's a worst-case scenario, somebody wants to use material where it's like all metal siding.
I was going to say, yeah, yeah.
And it's in, you know, there's just no, that's it, they just get to build it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That seems to be where the state is going with it. We could add, I think, an objective design standard to it. I'm open to suggestions, but it has to be objective if it's going to be a ministerial approval. Again, these don't, you don't get into these discretionary discussions. They either meet the standard, or they don't, and then if they meet the standard, they're given a building permit. If they don't, you can tell them how it has to be changed, but it can't be any subjectiveness to it at all.
Okay. Could you recommend what that would look like if we wanted to...
I'm racking my brain really quickly.
Sorry, I know.
And, you know, we use words that don't have a lot of meaning to a lot of people, like compatible, and those are what the state is pushing us away from, like, oh, you can't have neighborhood compatibility, because nobody knows what that means except for planners. And you can't have, you know, those type of vague terms.
Well, we used to have, we used to have design, I mean, in our general plan over the years, we've had specific things like craftman-like...
Yeah.
You know, I can't think exactly right now, but, I mean, we did have some standards, where when you did a project in town, it couldn't be, you know, all purple with, you know, all kinds of things. We had definitely standards for design review when we saw projects come through, so...
We could use language out of our old second-unit ordinance, perhaps. We could throw it in there and see what HCD says when we submit it. But, for example, here's what it reads, I can read it, like, "The architectural style, exterior materials, and colors of the second unit or carriage house shall be compatible with the primary dwelling unit." I mean, that's what it said previously.
Well, if they don't like it, then they can just cross it out, isn't that how that works when you send it to the state? I mean, if they don't, then you just basically...
Well, then, they tell us we don't like that, go back and change it, and then we're going back to the city council with it, and you, but, you know, I have a feeling we're going to be cleaning this up again, so I don't mind throwing something in there like that.
I just think that when you're dealing, well, that's another conversation, but that's what I'm asking about, is that I know we used to have design, and so, okay.
Yeah, no, it's...
Shall we, have you done that?
You're going to, you know, I'm going to say this, it might be something good to wrestle with, go ahead and throw it in there, because this is coming down the board with a lot of development now. There're going to have to be objective design standards. It's coming with a lot of different housing stuff, where a lot of this discretionary approval process is going to be going away, really taking our authority to regulate housing away, so, yeah.
Okay, well...
So, if you like, I, shall we can, oh, well, let's go...
Let's go for the next section on this. Is there, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment on it? Seeing nobody who wants to make a comment on the item, I'll close it. One dedicated audience member. So, bringing you back for discussion.
Well, shall we go through item by item?
Sure.
Because we have one, two, three, four different clarifying, it's in the second...
So, starting with the JD owner occupancy, do you want to lead ahead with it?
The elective changes, that one, the square foot on each...
Eight seven.
I think that's where we start.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with, my opinion on this is with JP, is that I think you need the design review application for 1,200, or design review discretionary for 1,200 square feet.
On lots less than half an acre.
Yeah. To me, that's appropriate, that's a house, that's... I'll just go through what I, my recommendations, and I don't know if you want to do it one by one?
Or shall we do that? Maybe that'll just make sense. Anybody got any strong opinions on that one?
I agree with the proposal.
I like the verbiage at the end about considering groundwater recharge, storm runoff, and so forth. I thought that was important.
I'm reasonably happy with it. I'm okay if the 1,200 is then becomes just part of the design review, they can extend to that. I'm just thinking that for the properties, knowing what the size, getting a feeling of the size, I'm good with, I'm good with that. So, effective changes, the next one, height. Start with my right, do you want to go first?
Let me just ask another clarifying. Are you comfortable with the 1,200 square feet across the board on properties greater than half an acre?
Yes.
Okay.
Happy with the language that's there. Go from the right with Steve on the next one.
I'm, I agree with the proposal of 16 feet within, if within setbacks.
I'm good with it as well?
Yes. Ask me also.
Okay, elective changes, number three, windows. Start with Lisa.
I'm good with the proposal. I definitely think this is going to be a hot button when we do, it's like ADUs, when we get used to this, but I like the idea that they were doing some opaque windows in, for some privacy for neighbors.
So, and consider internal lighting, privacy of neighbors, and ingress-egress, what does that actually...
This is a direction to you, to the planning commission, that these are things that you should consider when you're considering the options. So, what is, what were your questions? Like the internal lighting of the ADU. If you have clear story, you know, you're not going to have that big light coming in that might, of course, if you're four feet away, you're probably going to be right out of fence anyway. Also, with opaque windows, you're not going to get the amount of sun that comes in through, as would come through clear glass, so, so, there's a disadvantage to doing the recommendation, and that is, there're going to be limiting light in the ADU.
Well, people can put skylights in.
You can, you can put in, yeah.
Yeah, there's ways around it.
And you can also, yeah, you can put in the skylight, you can put in other things. So, I think it's, the purpose is, is to allow people to design for the property, and, I mean, I see it that the pattern's already been set, so, people will fit in there. But I do have one wall, that's a very long wall with only one window on it, a bathroom window, because it faces the neighbor, and I know my neighbor wasn't very happy when I built it, but that's the solution there. So, I'm happy with that language, elective.
Yeah, and just reiterating, that's the side that's facing the...
That would, so, that would be if you're within that setback on the side, it could be on two sides, because you're going to have, you could have a neighbor, so, it'd be on the sides facing the neighboring properties that are within that setback area.
Okay, okay, I was just thinking, the other option is, of course, if you've had other walls, you could put the clear windows to get the lighting.
Yep, yep.
And I think the opaque window is a good solution, so I agree with that.
So, is there any language that could suggest that there's be at least one window with a view, or a window for, really, I guess, air and lighting as part of the ADU?
Let me see if I understood you, can you repeat that?
I'm just thinking, we're talking about not having windows, but if there were, was there, is there a way of wording it which suggests there should be a window, at least one window?
We're not talking about not having windows. We're talking about if, we know that there's likely going to be windows, we want windows, but they're just going to have to meet this restriction.
Right, so they're going to just have a privacy in terms of the type of glass. Yeah, I mean, I think that's good, yeah. I've been in windows in places like that before.
Yeah, Frank Lloyd Wright did a lot of that with his Prairie-style homes. I saw a lot of that down, actually, Southern California, oddly enough.
Steve on there? Okay. The JADU owner occupancy, do you have anything on that, Steve?
I agree with the proposed, JP.
I agree, too. Yeah, I strongly agree with, oh, I'm sorry, no, I do not agree with that. I strongly disagree. I think that it should be required. So, you're proposing that it not be required?
Owner occupancy?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I just want to, and I want to give my thoughts on that, because I feel pretty strongly about it, that I think that change is so important for the community, and I'm excited to see the changes that we have here, but I definitely think it needs to be thoughtful change, and one of my concerns with this is that, especially as people are leaving California or the Bay Area and moving to other places, if they're building another unit and then decide it would be best if they rented both and moved somewhere else, I just think we lose a lot of accountability and responsibility over who's in these homes, and your neighborhood could easily change, especially, like you mentioned, there are a lot of residents who maybe are only living here for a short amount of time and then moving on to other parts of their lives, so, I just think that, while I don't think it's something that we can necessarily monitor as closely as we'd like, I think there are a lot of things in place that we have in place that, you know, people can choose to follow the rules or not, but I think having the rules there are important. So, I would encourage others, if possible, to consider that having the owner there would provide a value of someone kind of watching over what's happening on the property.
So, that's when they apply for the building permit at that point, that would be when the question comes up?
And it could change, is what you're saying, right, that...
What could change?
So, you're saying that we can't monitor it, of course, that, you know, the rule would be that, of course...
No, then we would go with the deed restriction, and then that's what the government code says in that type of case, that you would have the deed restriction for owner occupancy. So, yeah, while we may not be able to monitor it, it would be a condition of any future sale of that home, that they know that they, you know, one of them, and one of the owners would have to occupy that space.
Okay. And, you know, if there's something that I'm not considering that someone else would want to speak on, I'd certainly would love to hear it, but that's my feeling so far.
So, I have a question on that. So, if we did a deed restriction, when they did the JADU, there's no caveat to say that as soon as they did it, that owner could move out, have somebody come back in, and then, when they go to sell the property, they move back in?
Yeah, I mean, anybody could...
I'm just, worst-case scenario, I'm trying to think, you know, people try to get around...
Yeah, I mean, that's, we don't, we don't have the capacity to monitor every one of these. I don't even know what we would do, you know, how we would check that, but, that would be the restriction, that would be our approach, would be the deed restriction approach to it, if you choose to go that route. We already are doing a deed restriction on a JADU, so it's not like it's a big burden, we just throw that element into the deed restriction.
So, do you have any thoughts on that?
Having a real estate broker's license, a deed restriction is indeed an impediment. It greatly expands the cost of escrow title exchange. It's pretty much a nuclear option, and I, again, I feel, you know, it'd be a feel-good thing to have a provision, to have, you know, an owner occupied, but I still feel that we should go with the elective change. change and not have a owner occupancy requirement.
And I have to say, the deed restrictions that have happened in the City of Guitati in the past have not always been followed through, through the best of the planning commission, 'cause I lived in a deed restricted thing that was sold three or four times without anybody looking at the deed restriction. So, I mean, it was, it is what it is. You know, I, I kinda agree with, with Steve on this, that it, it feels good that, and I know everybody would want an owner occupancy, and that's the best-case scenario, but I think it puts an undue burden on them having deed restriction on it. You just hope that people don't want their houses trashed and their neighborhoods go down, so, we cross our fingers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of going along that way. I mean, I really, I, I do feel that aspect of how can you manage it better for, for the neighborhood, and, and I think that, I, I don't think we're actually gonna be changing that fast unless, you know, you had a lot of investment-type people coming in, and I'm not too sure where actually that's sitting. I think the purpose of the JADU really is to do more of a lower, do a, do a tiny, a tiny home type thing for students and things, and give them just a place that they can, can rent, whether or not, it makes it more complicated if you're then renting off two sides of it for somebody. So I would just probably side with the way it is. I mean, I definitely agree that, you know, whatever we could do to do that, but if it's not that easy.
I know there's a lot of these in Petaluma right now, especially my mom's neighborhood is an older neighborhood in Petaluma, and there's a lot of converted old garages in the back, and then people have also converted, you know, places where they have an accessory kind of, you know, they have something that they weren't using in their house, and was this necessary, a bedroom or something, and they've done doors off of it. I don't think it's been impacting the neighborhood that much. I'm down there a lot, and I see these older neighborhoods quite a bit. I think it's, it's, it's more impacted just the parking. That would probably be my, and we're, we're not even addressing that, but it's the parking situation, that it's, it's definitely, 'cause everybody has a car. And those are, you know, that's a, those are west-side neighborhoods that are definitely a little higher-end neighborhoods that they've done this in, and so, no, I've looked too, because I'm kinda looking to see what the impacts are.
So, so the other thing on here, I know it's just really a question, is what if this was allowed like this for five years and then had a sunset, that sort of concept that's there, leave it very open to begin with, but if it would come back in five years?
Well, yeah, then we would probably address it again in five years. I mean, if they had a sunset option and we, like, there are some communities that have the owner occupancy requirement, and they're gonna probably not be happy about the fact that the state said no, but I'm sure they're gonna go and revisit the issue in five years. But the eight, that, that, that five year, that only applies to the ADU? Okay.
It would be just on new building of ADUs, that initially it would be open, but if, if there was a lot of feeling that was coming up, a lot of people saw that there was changes happening from it, then it would come back to the council again, or it would be a mechanism for it to come back. That's just an idea, an in-between idea.
A compromise.
I think we'll be, I think we'll be revisiting this ordinance in another year or two, I just have that feeling, so, we can have this discussion again, yeah. Pardon? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we...
And, and who knows what HCD's gonna say? They may, may, may ask us to make some changes, in which case we'll be back.
And I do feel we should have that design element in there, as, as much as it may not fly.
You, you want me...
I think there needs some design element when you put in another structure in a neighborhood, just to have it compatible with the, what's existing there. Doesn't have to be completely compatible, but it has to be...
Shall I...
Me, it has to be, you know, I, I don't want a windmill next to me, you know, I, I'm sorry, I don't. I, as much as, you know, that might appeal to some people, but I, I don't, and so I think there needs to be some kind of design review element in there that it can be compatible with the neighborhood.
I agree.
Whether that's gonna fly or not, I don't know.
I agree, and I think we should, I think we should try for it. I think the idea behind this of adding housing is so important to me, and so many people who hopefully will have an opportunity to even have more affordable housing because of these types of units, but my concern again goes back to change and a lack of control over the change, 'cause I think change needs to happen thoughtfully, and, and this is one more step of doing that, of saying, you know, if you're going to add this on, then it needs to be done in a way that complements or is comparable to what you currently have on the property. So we can add that?
Um, do you want me to use that sentence I read earlier from our existing ordinance? "The architectural style, exterior materials, and colors of the second unit, accessory dwelling unit, shall be compatible with the primary dwelling unit." Or would you like to add something to that, or...
I like that, just because I think when that comes back around and we see it or whatever, and at least if neighbors know that that's in there, that, you know, at least we tried to have something to help out with the neighborhood. I think when you don't have any standards as far, I think you're gonna have issues.
Well, yeah, my concern is the shipping container.
Yeah, my concern is, is so many different things in my head right now.
Well, there are a lot more affordable options and quick options to adding or extending our buildings, so I think that we need to kinda keep in mind even what could potentially be developed or created. There are so many creative ways now to develop on your property that we need to consider those things and try to.
And I'm not saying a shipping container couldn't be used...
Yeah, absolutely.
If it, if it was done comparably to the house.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of ways to, to do that with, with other materials to make it, I mean, there's, if you go on a Bennett Valley or you go up on the mountain, houses are designed, and this was specifically done over the years, that they complement the topography up there, so you don't have these McMansions that are huge and they're stuck out like sore thumbs. If you drive up those roads, they're very low, they, they really, you really don't even see the houses a lot of the way. That was good design review, and that was good design review by Sonoma County.
But they went to AJADUs at that point?
No, there's not, and I, but I think there's, I, I don't think you throw the baby out with the bathwater, that's what I'm saying, and I think, to me, that's what the state of California has done, is, you know, I understand that there's just so many restrictions, but I, I do think that might, there might be some pushback on this, and I can feel it coming.
Certainly, I think compatible colors is a good one. I mean, keeping some compatibility in there and trying to encourage a discussion. Yeah, I'm good with the verbiage, I'm good with what you said.
Okay. Yeah, all right, then we'll add that into the, or the ADU development standard section of the opposed ordinance.
Only three more electors, so do you want to go with the clarifying changes?
I think that was it. The elective changes are done.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everything, everything else is the staff, just definitions that they're using.
Okay, good. So, can we have a motion? Is everybody happy with that? I'm trying to move it along, looking at the clock.
You know, before you make your motion, I'm gonna also take some time to look to see how other communities have wrestled with this. Not everyone's done this yet, then, again, this, you know, this just came out, 2020. So, that's what I'm gonna start with, but if I see something that I think will add to that, or make it a little more objective, but still accomplish what, what you're after, then I may tweak the language to include some of what I see there, when, before I bring it to the city council, and I guess I'm wondering if that would be okay with you? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it's definitely okay with me.
I, I mean, I, I like the purpose of it, which is to open it, to try and produce something that is lower cost of the JADU, just a basic tiny house, but how we fit it in is important also.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah, all my kids are moving away because they can't afford to be here.
Right.
So I totally get the, having these units, but...
Well, I think even on some of the bigger units, looking at this area of what we've got as the rural side, I mean, those are ideal places for people to put a second unit for the family, and, you know, and keep it like that as a family type thing, and not have the property split. But, so would somebody like to go with the, have you got everything else you said?
Yeah, yeah.
You're doing very well, keep on going here.
I'm almost done, GP. All right, so I'll make a resolution, I make a motion of the resolution of the planning commission of the City of Guitati recommending adoption of amendments to Title 17 of the Guitati Municipal Code to regulate accessory dwellings unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit in accordance with the state law by repealing and replacing Section 1742.170, second units and carriage units, and amending Chapters 17.22, allowing...
Allowable.
Allowable, oh, sorry, allowable land uses, 17.26, street and streetscape at standards, 17.31, affordable housing requirements, 17.36, parking and lodging, 17.42, standards for specific uses, 17.5 on resources conservation, 17.52 growth management, and 17.90 definitions with an amendment of language regarding comparable colors and materials.
All right. Good, well done.
Yeah, I thought I had it rough.
A second?
A second.
Can you have a roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Naitz?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenna?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Phew. Very well done, I think, everybody on that one. Okay, so the final item, reorganization of the planning commission for calendar year 2020, so I'll hand over to JP for this.
Um, this is just something we do annually, where you amongst yourselves will nominate a new chair and a vice chair, and take a vote on that, and then, then that, that person then will have control of the commission meetings. So I will turn it back over to you.
To the committee.
I would nominate Lisa Moore as our chairman.
I'll second that. Do we, we take a vote on that, don't we?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Naitz?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenna?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I would like to nominate Brittany McKenna for vice chair.
Vice chair. I'll second it, if you're willing to do it.
Okay, Commissioner O'Naitz?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenna?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Well, in very good hands.
Thank you. No unawkward moments aside.
Lisa's done it many times before. Shall I just go through this very quickly, or do you want to...
Yes, go, go ahead.
Okay, so items received after the agenda was posted, have we got anything? Oh, reports by staff, sorry, number H.
Um, I don't have a lot to report, other than to tell you that you're gonna start to see more housing stuff come. Like I said, we have the cottage housing ordinance, I haven't developed that yet, I don't, can't tell you what it's gonna look like. Buy right housing for multifamily, perhaps. And then also, I wanna just put out reminder that February 1st is the Sonoma State University Annual Planning Commissioners Conference. This year looks a really interesting topic, so encourage you all to attend. If you don't have a ticket, get in touch with me, or Noah, or Carrie, and we will get you covered if we're still available, so, let us know. Okay? And I think that's it for me.
Reports by commission? Steve, no? None?
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, I close the commission at quarter to ten. That wasn't too much of a race at the end.